Monday, July 21st. Our first item on the agenda is a special meeting. Would you please call and roll?
Debono? Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Trinhel?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Williamson?
Present.
Grealish?
Here. Item, the only item we have on the special meeting agenda is consideration of a GOCO grant submitted on behalf of Trinidad School District Number One.
GOCO, which stands for Greater Outdoors Colorado, collects a portion of public funding that they reinvest into communities. The only eligible entities to apply to GOCO are cities and counties. So our school district who came in June and presented to us about their wants and needs and desires for some updated outdoor equipment and fields would like to apply for GOCO and they need a partner to do that. So Ryan is here today to talk about this. What I'll say as he's coming up is there's two phases. The first thing that happens is if you agree, the city, the school district will prepare a concept paper, essentially that's what it is, saying what they want to do and submit it. GOCO will review that concept and they will either be invited, we, because we would be the applicant, would either be invited to move forward or not invited. So then we might be back when we're invited to move forward for a second discussion. So what you would be approving today is for the city to move forward submitting a concept paper by this Friday on behalf of the school district.
Hello, I'm Ryan Dornan. I basically covered all of it, eloquently.
Repeat your last name?
Dornan, D-O-R-N-A-N.
Okay.
And I work at Trinidad School District One primarily as an educational technology specialist. I help introduce new technologies across the district and I help train people in existing technologies that we use. Lately, I've been writing grants for the district. We don't have a full-time grant writer and it's a need. This is one that the superintendent approached me, I'll say, yeah, Jewish, with interest on doing this and I'd say the last month we've really been trying hard to spearhead it. But I even, I went to the county and presented the same plea for an agreement and they turned us down flat saying that we need to work with the city because we're within city limits. So in short, we are looking for 1.3 million, as a reminder, for our field renovation. That'll be for new turf, a three-lane track, which right now there's not a track, some landscaping, AD accessibility, and new audio so that you can hear what's going on and we can stream some of these games and make it more engaging. So far, we've raised $15,000 approximately just with grassroots efforts, you know, a GoFundMe paid agent sort of pleases and so thank you. We do have the ability to fund match up to $250,000 currently and there's no ceiling on the GOCO grant, not a hard ceiling that is. So the largest I could find ever distributed was $300,000. So at the ceiling, this could be half of what we're needing for our entire project. You know, we matched 300 and 250 and they do 300 and we're halfway there. So this is a huge opportunity for us, but as Tara stated, we don't have the ability to ask for it, only the city does. So we would like you to be our financial partner on this grant and if you all agree, I assume we'd need to set up an MOU and then move forward with the state. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Ogletree?
I have a question for Ms. Marshall.
Sure.
Is there a limit on what we can apply for from GOCO as a city?
No, and we don't intend to apply in this route.
Okay.
We're looking at a special grant called a Century Grant next July.
And that wouldn't be impacted by this?
That would not be impacted by this.
Okay.
And we would do as Ryan suggested, if the concept paper's accepted and we are invited to apply, that's when we would do an MOU with the school district to meet back for with you to execute that on applying for the funding.
That would be my only concern.
No.
Frank?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm glad you're doing this and hope it works out.
Thank you. And no questions and just hope it's all gonna, it will all go well. So they've got to stay positive, right?
Yes.
It is, I am a little bit, so I'd love to see everything taken care of over there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
No questions.
Thanks for being here today. Obviously, a strong school district is really important for the city. It means hard to attract new industry, new anything. If you don't have, you know, a vibrant city in part, that would definitely be a vibrant school system. So thank you for the effort you're putting in to that. I would say obviously the city is trying to do a lot of things too and so the line of questioning that I have really is just pertaining to that and not intending to call into question the capability, intention, or anything negative on the school district's part because obviously it's incredibly well motivated what you're doing, well intended, but I think it's important that we ask some of these questions. So Ms. Marshall, is there any potential downside under any conceivable actions or outcomes that the school district may or may not take such as, I mean, if they were selected to move forward with that and say work didn't, wasn't completed as expected, but the money was taken, that would be incredibly bad in direct reflection on the city, correct?
So the way we would work that, Councilmember Williamson, to avoid the scenario you're talking about, is if invited to apply, we would sit down with the school district informing that grant application. We would do an MOU that would require the school district to give us the match money which we would hold. So if they have the 250,000, we would take that and hold it in escrow. We, if the scope of the work was a total of 550,000, so upon submitting the grant, all of the grant money would be available. If granted, GOCO works on a reimbursement basis. So what would happen is we would hire a contractor and it would be the city in contract with the construction company. So we would hire a contractor to do that work. We would have to have certain allowances in that MOU and that understanding for change orders or for different things that arise like that. We would need, it would be something you would have to consider moving forward. We would put all of that in writing. If the project were not able to be completed, then it would depend on how it would reflect on us, would depend on how we explain that or what arose that caused that issue. Projects start out with intentions of developing this and there's not a single project we do that doesn't have change orders or changes we go. So that would be something we would work out in the MOU. In terms of any risk in doing a concept paper, I don't think so.
Okay, so I mean, I want to be very clear. I think it's important we help the school district.
Right.
We just do advise wide open.
Sure.
But it sounds to me that you're expressing we would have multiple firewalls in place to prevent anything negative happening to the city with respect to dollars from GOCO. Because you don't have to, without me, you don't have to go too far to see cities that have had really negative outcomes from losing the ability to get GOCO dollars. And I just want to ensure that we're not part, don't become part of that circle. So I think it's a good idea. We just need to do it fully informed.
Sure. I don't think the project will be even considered if the city council is not completely on board with this. So I think that would be the case even if they were an eligible applicant, right?
And also, your historical experience with the state also gives, I'm sure, gives all of us a lot of optimism for the situation. So thank you for entertaining the questions.
Sure, and if successful with GOCO, there are other funding options to help them get the remainder of the funding line, DOLA, which would once again be an agency that could only grant to the city or county.
Okay.
So this could be the beginning of a larger partnership that goes on for several years to try and assist the school district in getting the work done. And we do have a water line under that field as well, so we do have some attachment to the project before we even start.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Okay. Along that same line, when you started talking about the procedure about getting the grant and the change orders and the city's going to have to be the oversight for the project, school district is not. That in of itself raises a concern about how much, how many human resources are we going to have to use to get this project done? With the budget, our budget as it is, with our staff pretty much stretched to the limit now, do you have any qualms about this, doing this? Because if, once we start, we can't go back and say, no, we don't want to do that.
I don't. I think we can take care of some of that human capital and time that the city will be required in the MOU.
Okay.
I mean, we are not going to do it for the school district. The school district will have to bring resources to that table to do it.
Okay.
But ultimately, if there is a change order, we are the, we are under contract. So it will be city council who would consider that. However, the school district will bring resources to the table to provide that capacity in managing that construction project in tandem with us.
So what responsibility would the city take on liability wise for that project?
So we do construction projects day in, day out. We have contracts with construction companies to do that work. This would be no different than that.
Okay.
They would approve the payout. They would send it to us. We would scrutinize the payout. We would sign off on it and the check would be cut from our finance department. They would need to be managing that construction project on the ground, but it doesn't mean that our public works department wouldn't be over there helping answer some questions since we will be legally under contract for that. We did something very similar in La Porta.
Okay.
When we carried the grant to put the utility infrastructure in Americana Road, the mainline public utility structure, we put in Americana Road at the same time that their construction company was building the private sector connections. Now, that was ours and our project, but a similar type of relationship and working would be required.
Erin, do you have another question?
I have another, just a comment that I wanted to make. That for years, we've been looking for ways to build a better relationship between the city and the school district. And I like the idea of taking this on as a project that the city's involved in so that we can show that support.
It's not unusual for us to do this. We're doing the Tiger Grant right now for the Southwest Chief. It's very similar. We're the past due agency for that.
In my seven and a half years on council, I've never had this come up.
Oh, cool.
So I want to make sure we're doing our due diligence and asking the right questions.
Sure.
Thank you. I do firmly support this. I think it's a great opportunity, not only for the school district, but for the city to have a really nice football field. Okay, no other questions? I need a motion.
So?
Second.
To what?
To co-sponsor this grant for the school district with GOCO.
Oh, Ogletree made a motion for here, second. Did call the vote, please.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trinhel?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grealish?
Yes. That concludes our special meeting. So then we go to the work session. Item number one on the work set. This is completely different than what I have in my agenda. I don't have the Trinidad Police Department report. I had problems with my computer this morning.
I mean, the first item on the agenda is the board and commission interview.
Okay. And, but look at this. I have on the second is the police department report.
Okay.
24th of April. That's what?
24th of April.
Oh, 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 sorry, sorry.
Wrong month. We're getting this all.
Yeah, Frank, I'm doing real well. Sorry, I apologize. You just asked her, not me. Great.
I know it is.
Item number one, boards and commissions.
I believe Mr. Shepherd is here to interview for the board. The lodging tech, do you want to come forward, Mr. Shepherd? Sorry, mayor. I took over for you for a second.
That's all right. I need all the help I can get.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Shepherd. So we kind of know that you've applied for the LTAB board.
Yes.
But you now are eligible this month to be appointed.
Right.
So council's going to ask you some questions. I think everybody, I think, does everybody know Mr. Shepherd or do you want him to give you a little synopsis?
Yeah, synopsis would be great.
Sure. Okay.
How far back would you like me to go? So I started at Main Street this time exactly last year. And before that, I lived and worked in Waco, Texas as the director of the theater there. Before that, I lived and worked in Colleen, Texas as the director there. Got my master's degree in theater in 1999. Grew up, spent most of my life in Texas, but I've also traveled, lived in Georgia and Kentucky and New York as well. Does that do it?
Kind of.
I was on the swim team when I was in junior high.
Give us some info. We know Main Street lives.
Yes.
Tourist-driven for sure, as well as local residents.
Right.
But give us some idea about what expertise you have as far as tourism concerned and what expertise can you bring to the LTAB board with your presence on that board?
I mentioned that I was director of the theater in Colleen and in Waco and in both cities. I served on a commission that had a similar task. In Colleen, it was called the Arts Commission and we assigned hotel and motel tax funds to various arts organizations to promote, they called it various things, cultural tourism was the catchphrase most recently. And then in Waco, I served on another, it was called the Arts Board, but what we did was the evaluated grant applications. Also was an evaluator for the city of Austin and for the state of Texas for various grants for this same purpose. And then participated in the Texas Association for the Arts, which was a, essentially a lobbying group to the legislature to represent the interests of working artists in the central Texas area. And so as a member of that, we were constantly tasked with the idea of positioning the creative industries in a way that made them attractive to outsiders and also conformed to city, county, and state requirements for dispersal of those funds.
Okay. Mr. Williamson, do you have any questions?
Mr. Shepherd, have you spoken to anyone, whether it be from the city or the existing board, in such a way that you have a clear understanding of what your expectations would be while serving on this, on this board?
I have spoken to two people involved in it and I wish that I could say that I was clear on how, how great it was. My understanding is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that this body would evaluate and make recommendations to the council based on our understanding of the capabilities of the organization, its history, and its grantsmanship.
No, I think, I think we just meet with an adequate feeling of, at least a basic understanding of what we do. And I think, I think it's a very important board and hopefully it's one that can become, I would say, you know, more associated with the growing tourism industry in Trinidad. I think that's, it's really important to bring new dollars into Trinidad and I think that's a direct way to do it. To that end, do you, do you have any ideas and I'm not saying that you need to discuss them here, but do you have ideas that you are excited to share or given that ledge at this point?
I've actually written the mayor and the city manager on a couple of those ideas. One of them would be an increase of signage to our attractions here, judicious placing of them, different kinds of signage. Another would be, it seems to me as a, as a user of the system, that it's difficult for artistic organizations or individual artists to have the message of their work spread in the wider world, to draw people from outside Los Angeles County to understand the attractions that are available to us here. I have observed in the year that I've been here, some really successful events in the broad area of cultural tourism, the Rad Fest for one, that's handled largely, a lot of that need is handled outside our city, but it was very successful. And then I've attended, and then other events that weren't nearly so successful. So one of the things, at least from the standpoint of businesses that are there on Main Street, and one of the things that I would hope that we would be able to do would be to better coordinate both of the message going out and the delivery of services within. During the Chili Fest, my doors were closed, or the street was closed in front of me, but I didn't have any customers. And my customers who knew about my events couldn't get in the door, couldn't park, you know? And I think being able to work with the businesses in the area to tailor solutions to those sort of problems so that everyone benefits would be a dovetailing of the Main Street Board as well as the work that LTAB does. Because I think it is, it's hopefully our job to make sure that Mitchell, Main Street Live, Corzon Gallery, and all the businesses, the for-profit businesses up and down both commercial and Main Street benefit from these sort of public events which have an artistic element to them, or cultural element to them.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Eamon, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, but I do have a comment. Thank you for being a part of Trinidad this long and seeing, seeing the gaps where you think you can make change as far as the boards go. And I appreciate you doing that. Do you have any, like, I know, do you take a piss, you called a theater kid or?
Not at all.
So what do you?
Thank you for asking.
Yes, people do. So are you used to, do you see yourself being able to fit in and make change or, not make change, or create the thing you want to create for the board growth with that, with that theater experience and art experience? Do you feel like you can bring something to the table that'd be exciting for the city to?
Well, for two reasons, I hope so. One of them is that a guiding principle, if you will, of my life or purpose, you know, would be to be of service, right? And to contribute something meaningful to whatever situation I'm in, whether it be family or community or organization that I serve. So I would approach it from that point of view. Not that I'm here to, you know, shake things up. I'm here to be a meaningful part of the process and if I can be helpful in advancing it, in promoting changes that will allow us all to prosper, then yes. The other part of what we do in the theater that dovetails, I think, with that answer is, is that being a director of a theater is a little bit like being P T Barnum. You know, you're always selling, right? And always promoting and trying to convince people. And making Trinidad part of that pitch, you know, in Southern Colorado was, would be a great task to be involved in. Yes, sir.
Hi. First off, thank you. Thank you for your interest. We all know that social media is a thing.
It's many things.
It's many, many things. Being a member of this board, if you experienced scrutiny or criticisms, how would you handle that?
I try to grow a thick skin, you know, which is a thing that one does as an actor. Anytime one goes into an audition, whether it's singing, dancing, or acting, you know, you're doing your best and if they don't buy what you're selling or they're not interested in you, they're just not, you know? And so that's part of the life, right, already. Another thing in serving on a, on a commission, we, in Colleen, it was very political. And so sitting, we sat in the same day as the council did and we heard presentations. We were called all kinds of names politely, but called all sorts of names and got phone calls and emails and whatnot before and after all the funding decisions. And so it's part of the deal, right? And one tries not to take it personally or too seriously. And the answer is always, I'm doing the best I can with the information I have. I'm a part of a process, you know, and I hear what you're saying. I honor the place you're coming from, words to that effect.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure you get a lot of that.
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you so much for, for having interest in being, serving our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you sound like you'd make a really good board member. You seem like you would speak up and do some stuff in there that would help the community. One of the things I liked was about the Chili Fest that we've had other complaints about other people not having, you know, get to their business. We want everybody to benefit out of events like that. And I'm glad you brought something up like that because I think we need to work on that and get something where we can all get together and make it better for everybody. And I thank you for applying and I think you'll be a really good board member.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I'm delighted to reply. I love your background and a lot of your experience doing the same basic thing in other cities because I think you can bring some ideas, some what you saw work and what you saw did not work. And that would be really helpful, I think, for this board. Being the director of one of the recipients of money that LTAB sometimes goes to, how would you handle that matter and come with interest?
Well, my experience in doing that is we step off the dais, right? And in practical terms, there's no way, they don't know you're in the room, right? And so one does one's best to win on the dais to be fair and even, you know, in that meeting and considering an organization that never bring up my own, right? And the other is to, you know, cheerfully accept whatever decision is made and not use the position to lobby, you know, one way or the other for or against another organization. In a small town, and pretty much everywhere's a small town, in any small town, there's no way you're not going to rub shoulders with people whose decisions are, whose lives are affected by your decisions.
Yes, sir.
So are you sure you're going to handle rejection cheerful?
I'll pray on that one.
That was, that was a surprise. Have you gone to any of the LTAB meetings?
I have not. I did not know when they were scheduled and I, one of the members that I knew wasn't sure when they were either.
Okay. Well, that's.
There was an information deficit on my part. I would have loved to have attended so I knew something about how things proceeded beforehand.
Okay. We won't hold that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
That's not true. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Yeah, thank you, council. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Do you need to say for Main Street, is that going to be a separate one or is this all that I'm required for today? All you're required for today. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I've got the right information. Item number two, ballot, is your discussion?
It is. He's just. Right. I'll tell you on that.
You had a problem keeping him on tap.
He doesn't show up for four or five meetings and he starts spitting.
That's what you get. If you miss a wheel out.
I had that coming.
Yes, you did.
Okay. Bring it in. So in front of you, this aspect is a couple of versions of the proposed CIP extension that will be going on this November's ballot. Last of my worked on, on the questions and first one is basically as written for the most part every other time that we've put it in front of the voters. Very, what? Very just straightforward and, and I guess a little bit bland. The second one is. The second one is patterned more after the recent lodging tax ballot question, where we're highlighting some of the things that have been done with the CIP funds in order to remind the voters the importance of that CIP fund and the reason why we're asking to make it permanent. So I double-checked word count. We're under the 200-word limit with the second one. It's really up to city council if you want any sort of amendments to how it's worded, or if you have some alternative language. If not, then we'll have ordinances in August, on the first and second meeting in August, that you'll have to approve to set the ballot language in motion to make it on the ballot itself.
And may I say, I mean, I know we just speak for Ojra, but I think I know this. We prefer the second version. The second version is a little, right?
Reasonable.
Yeah, it does. It really does. I don't want to say, you know, making argument, but it just kind of sets forth what it's been used for, both for now.
I was gonna, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I was gonna ask if what the staff's feeling was. The other thing that I was going to ask is not specific to the choices, but what sort of, for lack of a better word, what sort of advertising would we be allowed to do as a city organization to support that?
So if I could, please, and that kind of brings us into a conversation that I've been wanting to have with council. No public funds can be expended on this measure. And so once the ballot title is set and it is referred for a ballot measure, then council, because it is from that admonition, and that's the Fair Campaign Practices Act, you cannot lobby for or against this measure in any way as council people. We can't either as staff people. Now, on your own private time, you know, people will ask you how you feel, and you can certainly give people your opinion, but you cannot lobby for or against a measure. And we can't, we can't spend money, at least tax dollars, on this issue.
I think it's so, unfortunately, it does seem as though, you know, there's never a lack of naysayers.
Right.
It seems like. And it's so easy for people to dismiss, ignore, or outright misconstrue achievements that the city has had. And I think it's just unfortunate, because it really does a disservice to the community at large to downplay that. Because this, I think, I think it's a really important thing that we can do to establish that going forward. I genuinely hope that it passes. So I guess the other question I was gonna ask, I think, I think we have done this in the past. Is, would it be possible to have a full and complete list of every CIP project? Is that, is that something that's tenable, or is that nearly possible? We can do that?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. I think that'd just be nice to have in the arsenal to discuss in my personal and private time.
Yeah, right.
Council is allowed to adopt a resolution even after the ballot title has been set. You're allowed to do that one thing. So you may want to consider doing that.
Neiman, do you have any questions?
No questions. I don't have any questions at this time.
No, I don't have anything. I think you guys did a pretty decent job getting that all right now. Especially in the limited words, if you can.
Right, yeah.
Go ahead.
I agree, you did a great job. I wondered also if we should throw in some, I mean, some of this seems kind of fluffy. Like, they're wonderful things, but not necessary things. And we use CIP for necessary things too. And so I don't want someone to carry away the impression that this is just for stuff that we think would be fun, but for stuff that we absolutely need. So if there's any way to stick a few things in here, I think, that would be good. We can add about 30 words. But I had a few storm sewers, for instance. We don't have any revenue that is earmarked for storm sewers, and it's always gonna be a big-ticket item, but probably unless we focus a lot of money at one time, you know, it's gonna be a tough one to deal with. So I think to the resolution that council adopts down the line, I think needs to explain what sort of consequences we would be realizing if this doesn't pass, because we would be, we would literally have no money for projects. None. So.
Can we put something in there about paving on the street? Because everybody asks about that, for street measures. I don't see anything in there that mentions that. And I think that's real important, because everybody asks once. And those are the one funding project that we do have for paving. I mean, there's a ballot, so if we can get that passed, I think that might help a little bit. That's not too many words to have.
Paving is one.
She was probably a bit shorter.
We have to come to a consensus, I guess. If we approve or do a resolution, is it gonna help us, or is it gonna hurt us? Truthfully.
I think it could help, just to have a fuller expression of how important it is to our lives.
But I don't think we should put paving in there, because that's been a hot topic.
That's why it's hot. That's what we need to do.
We are, we are, but most of it's gone to the ADA.
Well, we're starting to do stuff now. We've got streets getting paved now. I think that, I mean, most of the people always ask about that. And that's, I think that's an issue. I mean, we can't do all the streets, but if it's in or mentioned, that we are trying.
And a lot of the money did go to ADA, but again, that's.
That's a court order.
That, yeah, well, and not only that, but that's the reason that the paving has been delayed is because until you get those intersections correct, the paving just complicates the, it changes the whole steepness of that curb, the curb cuts. And so it's part of the problem if we don't have those done first. So that's okay.
I would also ask if, we have a limited time on the staff side to talk about this. So I did start approaching some folks in the community who might be impacted if we don't have this fund and are able to do projects that are aligned with their priorities. But if you can send me a name or two folks in the community that you think would be good spokespeople for this once the August 5th meeting happens, I really won't be able to reach out and talk with folks in the community. I'm happy to make those calls. I would urge you to make those calls. But if you can point me toward a few people that you think would be good spokespeople for this particular ballot initiative, I'm happy to reach out, sit down and explain why any of us on staff are. But once we hit that August 5th date, we're really gonna be limited to our ability to do that. And for me, even outside of work, because my job's 24/7, so never at work, not at work, so. But I'm happy to do that in the next week. It's a real priority.
I may rearrange this just a bit, because when I was reading it right before I came up, it seems like the words "used solely for capital projects, comma, leveraged with grant funds to maximize project scope and impact", and then including the, it sounds like we leverage it in all instances, and we don't in all instances. We do it in some, but it almost sounds like we're leveraging it 100% of the time. So I'm still trying to tweak how that needs to be worded to get it right, so.
Andrew, is there any thought about putting, I know you have since 1980 and extended six times since the vote of the people. Is there any thought about maybe saying 45 years?
No, that was a tax holiday.
45 years.
Four scores.
It could be worded however council wants it worded.
It feels impactful when you say we've had this tax for 45 years.
Yeah, the 45 years does, yeah. It's, it seems like it's one that it's been a lot more than what they're gonna realize, if they're even realize.
Something that's jumping on the screen to me is Fox Theatre. And I think what we're trying to do with Fox Theatre should be explained, like, say, Fox Theatre renovation, or just Fox Theatre. I think people are still not quite sure what we're doing, so that might be helpful.
Yeah, so if it can come to fruition, it's gonna be such a money generator for the community. I mean, in the same way that the arts-based building is heading towards. But I mean, I think, I think you're right. A lot of people see that as a net negative, to be quite honest. So if there's any way to squeeze that sort of education in there, man, that really burns the word count, you would think. I think we started becoming incumbent in our personal time to get that message out.
I do think that's essential.
Yeah.
And these other folks who you might be able to say would be a good spokesperson for that.
If I have a, I have a question if I may, Mayor.
Sure.
If any particular individual comes to mind, if it wasn't intentional. But, you know, there is some people that are, at times, known to be detractors of things that we have done. In the same way that you said we can identify people that would be good allies, it may be especially appropriate for the new city manager to reach out to them. One, because you can leverage your position of being new to leverage some sort of potential goodwill. And I mean, anyone with any fiscally, fiscal responsibility or a mind to understand that would certainly understand that the city is going to fare much better with that small tax versus not. I mean, it is such a small sacrifice per purchase compared to the benefit that we get as a community. I mean, I don't think it's overstating it to say it's a really, it's pretty ger-racking time, really, in a lot of ways.
It is.
It really changed the landscape of, if we don't have that.
And that's a point taken.
Okay.
Any other comments?
All right. I guess if council has any other ideas that you want to share them to Tara or to myself, or to Les, we can incorporate them before that first reading on August 5th.
Thank you for the word you've taken.
Yes. Thanks for bringing it back in.
Right, like focusing on the issues at the beginning.
Oh. It's a work session.
Right, right.
Okay, item three. Increase public safety of barter streets and public spaces.
Thank you, Mayor. This is coming off of the City Council Action Form, which four council members signed on March 4th, 2025. And in looking back, it did not come on the agenda following that request. We received a second request to bring this back on July 1st of this year, 2025. So here we are to discuss this item. I've had a conversation with a couple of you to try and hone in on what we might bring forward for your consideration and what we might want to receive feedback on. But this is a pretty broad topic. So we're also looking from you, especially those of you who requested this, to give us an idea of what you're looking for. So I'll start with a couple of themes. I know Mr. Downs has themes as well, and we've made some staff available. If we get questions, they can come forward. In your packet, the first thing I want to point you to is, right behind this title is a sign. We have currently ordered 20 of these. They will be going into city parks by the end of this month, beginning of next month, once they're received. The sign is said notice in large print. This park is closed from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. No camping allowed at any time pursuant to Trinidad Municipal Code. So the reference to no camping allowed is obviously the ordinance that was passed. And the park being closed is also in Trinidad Municipal Code. Do you have any questions about what the intent of this is, about the sign itself? We've already ordered them, so we're ready to go.
Anybody?
Okay?
I think this is a step in the right direction, the sign. But, you know, in legal terms, what is, what is camping? Can you camp in the middle of the day? I will refer to the lawyer.
Well, and we have the new camping ordinance that council adopted recently. And I'm sorry, I will get a hard copy of this to you. I also, I sent you piecemeal emails today. I'm sorry about that. There are three, or three state statutes on Trump paraphernalia, one state statute on loitering, a Trinidad ordinance on loitering, and any of those camping ordinance also that was recently passed. So as you'll recall, the definition of camping, we kind of were talking about that and what the hallmarks of camping were. There was some changed language. But we'll, we'll give you this as part of your materials to follow up. But if I could, please, it's 13-2-1B. Camber camping means to use the public area to reside or dwell temporarily in places lending accommodations included, but not limited to, the activities and circumstances listed below. These activities and circumstances may be considered indecent whether reasonable grounds exist or a belief has arisen that a person has camped or is camping in violation of this section. So, you know, there are other criteria, but I'll send you guys the ordinance so you have it.
Okay.
Good.
Second to the sign. I noticed one night when I went by, by Chino Park. It's very dark. So if somebody's laying on the ground or camping, you can't even see them. So I asked Mr. Valentine, who then talked to Mr. Vichita, and they did increase the lighting. But I think it would be beneficial to maybe even put some more intense lighting in that park.
Lighting is certainly something we can look at. Recently, in talking with Public Works over the past couple of weeks in preparing for this discussion, we're seeing the rock walls that we've built through Ms. Wolf's landscaping program being torn apart. The sprinklers have been damaged significantly within the past few weeks, because the water comes on at night. So those rocks from the rock wall have been pried out and put on top of a sprinkler pad, which are now being busted. The gutters have been torn off of the bathrooms in Chino Park, and some of the hinges have been damaged on the doors. So, I mean, the sign is the beginning of saying you cannot be here at night. We do have Chief Donavich here to talk about maybe some ideas we have about patrol. But it goes beyond just sleeping in the park. We're seeing destruction of some of the public space.
Chief, can you come up here so we can ask? I'd like to, I'm gonna go avoid protocol there, man, first.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep.
So would it be possible at or about the 10:00 range every night to go by Chino Park?
It's possible. I can't promise that the guys would, guys and gals would be free. And that's kind of my dilemma right now with.
Right.
Having patrols in that area is, we're busy right now. We're real busy right now.
No, I understand.
But it can be, a request can be put into the patrol teams to make a very valiant effort to get down there about 10:00 to get everybody to move along. Those who decide to disobey, we will handle accordingly with citations.
Okay. Because I think that until people get the message that there's no camping, we're almost gonna have to do that. I'd like input from other council members. I don't want it just to be my idea. I mean, if we're gonna get serious about this and the damage that's caused down there, they have literally almost demolished that, that park.
Yeah. I, um, I will say it's a, it is a travesty what's happened down there. I mean, I'm, it, it's embarrassing to say, I've, I've said it multiple times from here, so. But I, I was one of the people that used to invest in the state park pass to take my son to the park at the lake because I'm, I'm taken there. And to say, to say that from this position, it's vexing and too bad. Uh, but, you know, the, the best, the best day to plant a tree is forty years ago, the next best day is today. So I think, I think that's what we're doing. Uh, the amount of damages happened in that park is, uh, unbelievable. So I think any step we can take to claim that back, to be used by the citizens, uh, freely used and enjoyed by the citizens is a step we should take. And, um, Chief, I understand that it's a, it's a lot of extra work and I, I do apologize for that. But I, I, I think it's important work and hopefully it's, uh, work that will, um, not be ongoing. And maybe it can become less and less the more that it occurs. Because if that becomes an inconvenience to camp at at night, they may choose a different place tomorrow. The, the problem is, is as we enforce public, uh, nuisances, they're, they're going to transition to private places. So it becomes incumbent on private citizens to report that and, um, request them being roustied from there at that point. So it's not a problem that's just gonna disappear overnight, but I'm, I'm glad we're taking the, the steps to do it.
Well, you know, do we have a neighborhood watch in Trinidad?
We had one organized, uh, a few years back before COVID. Um, and what ended up happening is it turned into, uh, kind of a, a time for people to come in and be kind of nasty towards the police. It, it, they got a little heated. And then COVID happened, so we just, we kind of stopped it. Cause we were holding these meetings at the police department. And, um, there was a lot of negative stuff that came out of it that was like overwhelming, I guess you could say. Um, but I, I don't see a problem with that as long as it's kind of held in, into some type of format or control.
Maybe this is something our, and I don't mean to minotwist, but I'm thinking about this. Maybe our communications director can put some, the word out, I'm sorry, I'm getting spam. Get the word out to watch out for your, your area and let people know that we are not going to allow camping in any public space. Mr. Merchant and I went through the Riverwalk last week. There was a guy actually sleeping on the Riverwalk. We almost ran over him.
Really?
Yeah. But I think we either have to take, get this serious about this or let it go because it's kind of, what we're doing now is, I consider it flimsy.
Absolutely. I, I agree. And it, it bothers me just as much as it bothers everybody else in this room. It's a very frustrating topic to deal with.
It is very, it's frustrating for us as well.
And it really does, on the weekends, I drive past there and I just, I, I rack my brain over and over again. What, what's the answer? What's the right answer? And I don't think anybody has the right answer right now. And we're not the only community dealing with this all the time. There are some communities that are suffering from homelessness much worse than we are. But again, we're trying to suppress it as much as we can here. Um, I've talked to, uh, Ms. Marshall, uh, a couple of times about stuff. I, I, and I've told council this before, I ideally would love to have a staff member, a police officer stationed downtown permanently. That's, that's their, that's their beat, that's their, their sector. Uh, right now, the city's split between two sectors, the river splits it. And I'll have a police officer on the Sector one on the south side and a police officer on Sector one on the north side and a supervisor. If we're lucky and fully staffed and nobody's off or sick or, uh, having a baby. We'll have four police officers working, so you do have that third, uh, roamer that can kind of be out there. But that's not always the luxury that we have. But that's a dream of mine is to have a downtown police officer, that that's their section that they work for the day, all day. And that includes the Riverwalk, Chino Park, Commercial Street, that whole area down Main Street. But unfortunately, we just don't have, don't have the budget to add more staff for that right now. So, um, we've talked about citizen, um, Rangers or Patrol that would be, uh, out there. But then again, they would have to call the police when they see, you know, crimes happening, which kind of defeats the purpose. But it does bring presence.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a city official, a city person, another person in there who's watching and maybe, you know, has presence.
If you had a, if you were forced to have a guess at that, how many people would be interested in doing something?
Couldn't tell you, Mr. Williamson.
All right.
I, I, I mean, I can't, I have a hard enough time getting people to want to come be police officers. So, uh, being a glorified park ranger, I guess, I don't know, it'd be kind of tough to, to judge that. You know, you really don't have authority, but you have authority, but you still have to call somebody to come help you.
Well, you say, you have a lot of, a lot of risk, really.
Exactly, yeah.
And you want to worry about the temperament of the people you meet in that position.
Right.
Yeah.
So I mean, we're, we're putting those ideas out there on the, on the table. We've talked about it, we've discussed it. Ultimately, I think the, the, the best option is for me to be able to station somebody downtown when, when we get to that point. Um, but I have a whole city I need to keep safe and it's not just, you know, we get, we get really focused on downtown. We get really focused on that, that area. But we have people still in from Walmart left and right. You know, we're about to add two gas stations three miles outside of town. You know, putting my stretch and, right, stretch hot Ranger out. So, I mean, it's, we're, we're, we're trying to be everywhere all the time and it just doesn't work out.
Interesting, cause when I was looking at statistics of how many police officers to have coverage, it's generally, everything I could find was based on population, but.
Right.
Mike just brought up a great point. We've stretched the city limits and annexation is generally when we think and talk about services and whether we can cover them. So, um, it does pull them out of the downtown door.
Presence is gonna be the deterrent. They, when we do go down and we're able to get free and go do controls and stuff down there, being in the area. We were down there this morning looking for some people, doing some stuff. And they just, they kind of disappeared. Doesn't take care of the problem, because guess what? They probably went under Commercial Street Bridge or went to the Boulevard section. You know, it's just, it's not gonna, that's not gonna be the answer to, to help with the homelessness problem. That's a deterrent to, to get us going in the right direction. The stepping stone is some signs, more presence, but we're working towards it.
Anybody got any comments?
I have, I have just an observation. Um, you know, we keep saying homelessness, homelessness, over and over, we're trying to address it and we know we can't. Cause there is no, we know there is no solution as of right now, because if not, we would have had it. But I think the focus needs to be, are, are ordinances strong enough? Do they have enough teeth for you? Do we need to increase them even more? Um, I U vandalism, paraphernalia, loitering, any of those? Like, do we need to strengthen anything for you to do your job?
We kind of discussed this, uh, last week a little bit. Um, I'm a little unclear on it too, this might be a question from Mr. Downs. Um, our ordinances can't go above and beyond what state law says.
Correct.
We're usually righted to that point of what state law says. So the state of Colorado has done some amazing things with our laws lately. And, uh, most of the time, we're writing citations into county court or municipal court. Um, a lot of times it has, there might be a municipal court violation that they could be cited for. However, they're being charged with something else that's got to go to county court. I don't like to split those up so it all goes to one place or another. Because they only have two court dates that they risk missing and, and, you know, so. But a lot of our stuff is cited and released anymore.
Not to mention the problem of tracking homeless people into municipal court. And how challenging it is to really, you know, do anything. Like if you find a homeless person, we can, you know, Pam can give them community service also. But just kind of the punitive component of, uh, citing someone who is homeless and bringing them into municipal court. It's just hard to really enforce anything against them.
Have you ever had somebody show up?
Yes, oh, we have a lot of homeless people. We had a municipal court day today and I bet you probably four of the, uh, people who were here out of maybe twelve look like they might meet that definition of being homeless or unhoused. Yeah. It's so, you know, a, a full third, third, chuck my mouth in my head.
Okay, Mr. Fu, last one.
Last one. You're the best. Well, first of all, you know, you're, you're putting up signs and all they're gonna do is get spray painted. I mean, we're wasting our money. And that's exactly what's gonna happen. Now, I mean, you can put them up in a few places and stuff, but they're gonna end up doing that. And then on a camping park, if they're camping and the police chase them out, that isn't really gonna do any good, because they're down on the other side of the park and camp. So, I mean, what, what, what's the issue there? We're not really doing anything. Everybody wants to be serious, but we're not really being serious about that. And the Parks Department this year hired some guys, right? Some extra guys?
No.
We did have some substitute guys.
Oh, are you talking about seasonal? Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember. Would it be possible to get a couple of, one seasonal guy and one of the regular parks guys to continuously just work the river and Chino Park and have the other guys take care? Now that we have a few extra guys to do it. If there's a presence of Parks guy in there all the time during the day, not just during the day, it's gonna help. It won't help at night if we could get someone. But at least it would clean it up and we'd have guys there. And they're not gonna do too much of regular parking, I mean, be there all the time. You know, go across there and that, and make sure that they're picking up trash and just be in prison during the day. And then at night, I, I don't know what the issue there is. It's tough for you, like I know Mike, it's impossible to really take care of these people. But like I say, some of the stuff that we're doing, we say we're getting a start on it. Well, it really isn't a start because they're gonna just avoid all that. So what we need to do is, is get with Mike and maybe somehow or another, get someone to work on the street for us. And, I mean, when we were, of course, the town's changed a lot. We always had two guys walk, work in the street at night. They'd come to work at three and work till midnight, walk in the street. And that's how the patrol was, Main Street, Commercial, those areas. You can't do it because I know you don't have that many guys. But maybe somehow or another, we could really find the money to get one guy to work. And not so much during the day, but maybe evenings, patrolling the park and the, that. And that'll keep them out of the early hours. That, I think that would help a lot.
Goal I've always had in mind with, since this is kind of flooded up, is to have somebody stationed permanently. That's where you work, that's your area that you work.
So that might be something that we could, I know we don't have a lot of money and stuff, but it might be worth it to say because you buy these signs, you buy all that stuff, it's expensive and all they're gonna do is mark them up and spray paint them and deface them. So those are a couple of ideas that I have, I mean, on the council fields, but I think if we had a couple of Parks guys patrolling that, cleaning up trash, I mean, they're cleaning it up anyway, but if they're all the time during the day, people aren't really gonna mess around. And if we can find some way to get an officer to work the evening, late, I mean, early evening hours till late and ten o'clock and patrolling where the sign says nobody's supposed to be in there, I think that would help a lot. And I, I, I think those are steps that will make a difference, not talking about, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. I think we should actually go ahead and, and, and see what we can do to work this out.
Sure. And Mayor, would it be okay if I just was responding to council membership?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, when we combined parks and streets eight years ago, we had ten people working in parks and sixteen in streets for a total of twenty-six. Today we have fifteen. So there's quite a few, fewer employees right now on PD's roster. We have actually two PD positions that are not filled, that we've held, uh, to implement some of the, um, union negotiated, um, step programs. So when it comes to staffing, yes, we could look at staffing police department. We could also look at picking up Parks crew. Most of the seasonal summer crew that's been brought on is for the additional work in weeds, mowing, um, spraying flowers, bathroom maintenance. I have some things I want to share with you. We have six public bathrooms that were generally always opened in the morning and closed in the evening. Chino's been closed permanently. Had to close Commercial Street bathroom this weekend. Um, somebody decided to hold a barber shop there on Saturday. It was full of hair. Took almost two, uh, over two hours to clean it. Right now, um, Public Works has been tracking in the month of June and early July, the amount of times that are pulled away from their regular work to, um, clean additional, pull additional trash or clean the parks. It's approximately thirty-five percent of time that, in the month of June, that they were pulled away. Given the average salary in Public Works, that's about two thousand four hundred and fifty per week. That's being pulled toward that, which is about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand annually. That is to clean the parks, to clean the bathrooms, to clean the homeless camps. Additionally, looking at the landfill fees we're not collecting for the loads that go all the way back to January of this year, looks like it's gonna end up being approximately seventy-eight hundred dollars in landfill fees for the additional camping trash we're pulling out. So we've been trying to look at this. I know I, I misstated when I said we're just getting started. We've been trying to collect data to look at so that you can understand the impact of this fiscally on the city. Not to mention what time the police officers have taken. And Public Works is actually saying that in the, on the Riverwalks and the Boulevard edition, they've seen fewer camps because police officers have been doing foot patrols and have been out in preparation for the camping ordinance coming online, letting people know. So we are actually seeing fewer camps. We don't know that that equates to fewer folks. And then finally, I would say that some of the suggestions we're bringing forward are not really to solve the homeless issue. We know that. But we do have public parks for a purpose. And that purpose is being, um, overrun by this issue in particular. So in addition to the signs, and I know that was just one thing, we do want to recommend an ordinance change to how the public parks, um, are permitted, to how we permit special events. And we do want to talk about it and we had in your packet, a change of ordinance. But I don't want to get into that until you're through asking Mike questions.
Yeah. I, I think it is important to remember that this conversation is about parks and not the homeless issue generally. But I think it's peculiar that we haven't even mentioned that we had a homeless coalition who was working on the homeless issue in the city of Trinidad. And we, I don't, are they still doing anything? Have we gotten a report from them? Is there any?
We have some information we'd be glad to address as we go through our packet of information.
Um, because I, I think it's, we need to be clear about what we're working towards. Are we working towards no homeless people in the city? Are we working towards no homeless people in the parks? Are we working towards, is it vandalism that we're trying to eliminate? I think we have to be really clear about what it is we're trying to do because otherwise we're, we're just gonna throw a bunch of stuff at it. Um, if we want nobody in the park after dark, we need a police officer there round the clock to make sure that that doesn't happen. That's resources that we have to devote to that, that we could be devoting to something else. But if that's our priority, that's what we should do. I don't have a problem with the signs. I think, yes, obviously people do stupid things and, and, but that doesn't stop you from holding the line and saying, here it is, you can't be here. They can't pretend like they don't know, there's a sign that says no camping. I do, I, I know this, I've just been kind of rambling, but I, I really think it's important that we articulate what it is we're working towards. Because I don't think we're doing that. I think we're just talking about how much this annoys us and how angry we get that our public assets are being destroyed and kept from the general population using them. But that's not gonna solve it. We've got to think, are there structural things that we could do at that park? Should, if we're not using the bathrooms and they're not open, should they be knocked down because they prevent line of sight from the road? Possibly. Uh, I mean, we've got to think about structural things that for some reason are leading people to think that's a good place to spend the day, that's a good place to spend the night. And we gotta make that not true.
I, you know, I really, in my own mind.
I, you know, I really, in my own mind, don't think it's a homeless issue. It's a drug problem.
Both. I would say both, I am.
It's a drug problem that's led to homelessness because some of these kids that I see that are addicted have people, they have families in Trinidad, but their families don't wanna take care. And there's only X amount of things we can do as a community to try and protect our assets to be able to allow people to go down there and use the parks. We're not drug counselors. We're not rehab specialists. Keep Trinidad safe and the Coalition needs to come across and ask. We need to ask them what we're doing. This is just, it's very minor compared to what the problem is. I've seen it myself down there. Keather and I went down by underneath the biaduct where the trains are at, and there were end caps of hypodermic needles. And I think Keather counted twenty-four.
Again, yes, that's awful. What do we wanna do? Do we want daily crews to go in there and clean it up? Do we want daily crews to go in and roster people?
The fact that they're there is a problem, but the bigger fact is we have a big majority of the population that are hooked on this stuff. And yes, we can't, you know, as far as the Police Department can do X amount, but we need to find our partners, like with the Coalition, and keep Trinidad safe. What are you doing to try and help the addicted individuals?
Well, now we've shifted away from the topic, which was to keep our parks safe, to the larger issue. So I do agree, we're looking for some.
So do we look at a zero tolerance initiative? Do we look at that? Do we just say that we're just, we're fed up and we're done and just hardcore go at it? Is that a possibility? Because it's not stopping. And it's, we've handled it with kick gloves over and over. And I know, I keep getting, I keep getting feedback from people that keep telling me that, like, well, because I have a job, I get a ticket.
What do you mean?
Because they're able to afford it, so they get a ticket. But because somebody doesn't have a job or they're not, or they're homeless, they don't get a ticket because we bypass them because they can't pay it or they're not gonna show. But because we have a home and we have a job, we get the ticket. It makes no sense. You know, it's consistency across the board. And I understand the frustration, sir. I know, I know. No, I get it, but it's like, but this is what, you know, when people ask me, it's like, well, it doesn't seem fair that if, let's say, somebody on Smith Street goes down there and does some stuff and they get arrested and they're like, oh, okay. They get their ticket. But then somebody else comes out, looks homeless and vagrant, and we say, well.
If I could, please, absolutely, counsel, like zero tolerance, though, you know, zero tolerance policy from what? To counsel an old tree, but right, isn't like drug use, you know, good luck, go ahead and solve that.
Right, exactly.
But also, I do wanna say that it depends on the offense. Like, if there is, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be funny, but if there's like defecation in public, they're going to get a ticket, right? There are a lot of things that people are going to get a ticket for. If there's a traffic violation, they're going to get a ticket. There are a lot of citations and things that are, you know, like shoplifting from Walmart. That's one where the items are recovered and nothing is taken. It's kind of like, okay, what are we doing in prosecuting a homeless person for taking items, you know, let's say, in from Walmart? But anyway, I don't want you to think there's a double scam.
No, but I'm just trying to get to the point like where, where Counselor O'Tree is at, you know, it's like, what are we doing? Is it on a line item? Like, that's why I brought that up, because it's like, is that what we're looking for?
May I? I, first off, I have an extreme amount of respect for everybody involved in this discussion from, I mentioned Marty, Keather bringing it back to the forefront. Everyone on the dice, staff, obviously. Everybody would want to see this be different. And I respect what you said, Counselor Shu. And I'm certain you're right. That is going to happen to the signs. But I think what we're trying to address is the inability for the townsfolk, this is what we're talking about right now, to enjoy the public spaces in Chaminade Park. If, at a bare minimum, if we put the signs up and we make sleeping in the park, at least on a nightly basis, so miserable that people won't do it, eventually, the sleeping in the park will stop. And I mean, to your point, Mr. Shu, obviously, they're gonna go somewhere else. I get that. But if you continue to make sleeping in the parks so miserable, you park a squad car four feet from them, turn on the side, and they probably leave, potentially, maybe. Although I've seen someone that might sleep through that. But what we're trying to do is de-incentivize sleeping in the park currently. Then I think we need to de-incentivize other instances, such as using the park as a gathering point. And which I know you have that, but we have to take several jabs at the problem to try and disperse it to other places. And then and only then we'll be able to address those.
But what's the jab?
The jab is.
That's what we're trying to get at.
The jab is not allowing people to sleep in the park, whether that's getting out of the squad car, waking them up with some means, moving them along. Granted, it may be to the other side, and it's gonna have to be moved again, but eventually, they'll find somewhere else to sleep if we do it every night.
Like, you know, I think I know the reason why Chaminade Park is a gathering point. It's because people that feed, the homeless, or those individuals that hang there, that's a gathering point. Because that's where everybody goes to feed them and everything. And I understand, I'm not heartless. But this is what I'm seeing because that's, my office is a couple of blocks away from there. It almost seems like that park, that park is a tumor. It's a cancer that's spreading from that park all the way to Commercial, all the way down the river. It's spreading. And it seems like the destruction of private property is spreading with it. And if we, we've got to try. It's gonna be a trial and error. I mean, Mike and his crew are gonna have to see how it works. Come back and say, hey, guys, you're wasting your time and money.
Hours too, maybe.
Yeah. We gotta, we have to do something.
And we have to try.
I slit my own eyes.
And I'm sorry, but like, cameras would be very helpful, I guess, a lot of things. Because, you know, destruction of property, criminal mischief, is a misdemeanor that is jailable. Or it's a felony that is punishable by a prison sentence. And I know that a lot of the officers could look at a film of someone, you know, like a person, they're all well-known at the PD. If they see them destroying property, they would know who it was, and they could put a dollar value on it, and they could put them in jail. That would be helpful, Frank. I'm sorry.
Do we have cameras over there?
We have, there's one camera at Chaminade Park and it's
That's what I said, I thought.
Trees and buildings and that's another call of mine on top of having somebody permanently stationed downtown in the area, is to add more cameras to our system. Including more on the Riverwalk, more in the park where the people are at, budgetary issue.
What about towns?
We have drones that takes a person to fly it. And that's another, takes somebody else off the street that's not doing the full work.
And it's not likely that you're gonna see them in the act of like doing, you know, some kind of destruction.
Surveillance is very beneficial to law enforcement because most of us know who everybody is in this town. We can go back and watch video and say, oh, that's so-and-so, they did that. So one issue that I do have is when somebody calls in, that person is either gone from the area when we get there, or they're no longer committing the act that they were doing. And nobody wants to sign a complaint saying, I witnessed this person doing this. And then I do get, you know, I hear some of the discussion that happens in council where we're talking about some things that that have been seen or been portrayed to you, that people are not calling the police about. They just wanna call council members and say, I'm seeing this go on, why aren't we doing anything about it? So I encourage the public to please see something, say something to law enforcement. I can't do nothing if I don't know what's going on. Right, so.
So it sounds like more police presence?
Yes.
More cameras?
More cameras. Where they can't get destroyed.
Right.
We put them up pretty, pretty good, up high, pretty good. So they're good cameras.
Good. That sounds like a starting plan, actually, that now, they're forgetting somewhere.
More illumination to support the cameras, right, so that it's.
And we used a grant to light up the Riverwalk. I think it was, I don't remember the name of the grant.
Yeah, it was the state parks.
Surveillance would fall into a grant for something like that. They have Safe Streets grants out there, stuff like that, that we can look at that, where we're not happening to put that into the budget.
And in this world, I would say structural things like, why do we have picnic tables down in an area that's kind of sketch? Put those picnic tables up where they have to be seen by everybody.
My understanding is those were moved at the request of trying to get the feeding out of the parks, which is the next thing we'd like to do.
Until we have a park that can support picnic tables, we should just remove them entirely. That's what we should do.
Before Mr. Tovovich sits down, before she sits down, can you talk a little bit about loitering? We were hoping to clarify when Chief Tovovich was explaining to me what loitering is. Do you mind covering that? And then less can talk about the state law.
So our municipal ordinance basically says that you have to be like impeding a roadway, sidewalk, business entries, stuff like that. Some of the business owners in town say, well, them merely being on the sidewalk is impeding people from coming into my business. And I said, well, they have to be physically impeding, like sitting in your doorway. The way the ordinance is written, laying across the Riverwalk where you're trying to get past, that's definitely, that's a violation of the ordinance. So that's my interpretation of what our city ordinance says. You have to be impeding something.
Or blocking.
Or blocking. Merely just hanging out on a street corner is not considered loitering. You have the state law you said there last?
I do. And the same law is not very helpful either. I have sent this to you guys. It's eighteen-nine-one-one-two. And loitering, it talks about schools, but the word loiter means to be dilatory, to stand idly around, linger, delay, or wander about, or to remain, abide, or tarry in a public place. Anyway, it's a petty offense. There were some other components here.
Just a classification of a crime petty offense.
Exactly. So it's not, it's not real helpful. Loitering is not. I do, anyway, I don't know that I've ever seen a ticket for loitering in municipal court. It's just, it's not really the kind of thing where it's easy to meet the elements. You can't just be standing around and therefore be guilty of loitering. It's not how it works, unfortunately. But I do wanna talk about at the appropriate time, drug paraphernalia.
This is a good time.
Okay, good. So one, and there are three statutes on drug paraphernalia. Eighteen-eighteen-four-two-six, four-two-seven, and four-two-eight. And that is, and this is also what was kind of the catalyst for this conversation, was the number of citizens who came up here and were complaining about what's going on down there. So it is clear what is drug paraphernalia. And it is not permissible to pass out or to give or to sell drug paraphernalia or even to possess it in certain instances. However, this is at the very bottom of eighteen-eighteen-four-two-eight. It says, any person who commits possession of drug paraphernalia commits a drug petty offense. And upon conviction thereof, shall be punished by a fine of not more than one hundred dollars. And that's, that would be in county court primarily. So it's not very, it's not, you know, there aren't a lot of teeth there for that. But, but people could be cited, especially if they, if we find out who it is that is passing out these, these drug kits, these paraphernalia kits in Chaminade Park, like people have spoken about.
Still kind of a mystery to us. We've been asking around to find out. It's just kind of like, oh, we don't know.
Yes, yes.
A little thing about drug paraphernalia before I forget, though, a lot of drug paraphernalia is something else, right?
Yeah.
Right. So you're diabetic and you need to take insulin, you can have needles legally, right? You wanna snort something, you just take your pen apart and snort it through straw, or you carry a straw around with you. That's the hard part about drug paraphernalia. Is it could be said, well, no, that's my pen, or that's my, I keep foil in my pocket to wrap my sandwich in. You know, we've heard it. We've literally heard these things out on the streets. So that's another thing that, I've seen the bags that were getting handed out. Nothing in there just says, I'm for doing drugs. You know, it's common things that people turn into drug paraphernalia. That's kind of a hard thing to see.
So like, hypodermic needles aren't considered drug paraphernalia?
Depends on what you're using it for.
Because one of those kids had a stopper put on a tube to, I don't know, to coke or whatever. I'm not knowledgeable to.
And that's the, that's the problem with it, is that if you're using it to do drugs, and we can prove that, then it's drug paraphernalia. Other than that, it is what it is. It's just a needle. It's just a glass tube. It's just a piece of cord. But gotta be able to prove that that was being used for drug use. And that, we do charge people with it. Had a situation recently where some people had to pay the consequences for their actions, and they actually went to jail for it because we were tired of dealing with a certain house in a neighborhood that ended up getting busted, and, you know, so it's a chargeable offense. It's just, in the end, a result of it. How many, a hundred dollar fine, you said?
Yep.
This situation, though, Mike, that recently happened was, and correct me if I'm wrong, it might have been people in public that were kind of chased into a private residence, and then you were able to build a case regarding the activity going on there.
Yeah, it was an investigation on the house, and a neighbor finally called us and then called City Hall to complain, but we were just in the works of making that search warrant happen and stuff. So it just takes us time to investigate this thing. We got off track a little bit there, but.
We did.
Anything else on, you guys had some questions on drug paraphernalia, sorry.
Anybody?
I interrupted. It's kind of hard because you just say, throw a wrench in it with thought process was.
So sleeping in the park, we're gonna start addressing that as best we can with the current staffing we have. We've looked at loitering, possibly to try and do something there and didn't have much of a solution. We're looking at the drug paraphernalia. Don't have much of a solution. I think one of the most famous things that's talked about in management is you can solve problems, you have to have money to do that. So we're continuing these conversations. We're gonna start addressing sleeping in Chaminade Park and see where we go from there. Sleeping in public. But we're really starting at the epicenter there. I know we have a couple other things we wanna talk about, but we don't wanna limit your time. And Chief Tovovich, he can certainly come back, but does this give you kind of, have you had enough questions?
These guys finished, finish the camera, or we'll be good.
We definitely appreciate you.
You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Chief.
You're staying for the rest of?
Oh, he'll be here.
I'll be around, yeah, if there's any other questions.
We're just gonna bring up someone else. Thanks, Mike. So when Marty Hackett retired, we brought special events, park permits, special event permits back in the City Hall. It's just easier for us to coordinate that. When we did the staff reorganization, we talked about that. And that is specifically seated in the Clerk's office. So one of the things that the clerks have been doing, and I don't, I don't wanna put her on the spot, but I thought Audra might come up and we can talk about this ordinance change. This goes directly to how the parks are being used, what we permit in the park, what we haven't been permitting in the park, and some of the statistics I gave you on what cleaning the park is costing. So we have a couple of recommendations. Ms. Garrett?
Okay. So on the ordinance proposal, really, it's a matter of just changing definitions. The ordinance itself, I think, is pretty well-written. It wasn't geared towards our current circumstances, though. It's not titled Park Use Permit. It's Special Event Permit. There's nothing in our code that I found anywhere that is Park Use Permit. But Special Event Permit is basically defined in the code. It doesn't define city property in there. So a definition would be added to, to define city property so that it's meaningful in the code. Currently, we don't have anything in our code that talks about demonstration. Currently, we don't have anything in our code that talks about demonstrations. We don't ever permit demonstrations. We don't want to infringe on people's First Amendment rights. And so as long as they're temporary and they're there for that purpose, they're peaceful, we don't have any intention of, unless council decides otherwise, of permitting them. The way the code was written, it was, a Special Event Permit was designed to permit a planned or organized occurrence that included, included expected gathering if the primary purpose of the occurrence is entertainment, the public or a substantial portion of the public is invited to their occurrence either by express invitation or by implication, and the occurrence is expected to have a visual sound or environmental impact, or to cause disruption of the normal routine of the community, or the affected neighborhood, or involves filming. So as you can imagine, blocking a Park Use Permit and having this language in there makes it really ineffective for a lot of our purposes. So by simply changing definitions, adding that demonstration in there, and then redefining in this whole section, the Special Event meaning, I think we accomplished what we need to accomplish. And the only question I have for council is how many, a group of how many people do you want the staff to permit? So at what point do we, it's item C under the definition, any occasion for which a group of blank number of persons assembles and which obstructs, delays, or interferes with the normal flow of pedestrian or vehicle traffic for controls, any controls? That in particular is what will, what will permit the parks for. So currently, we don't have any permit for the gatherings in the park where, where they're congregating to receive food. So it's definitely interfering with normal flow of pedestrian traffic in that park. And it's not, it needs to be permitted. We have a soup kitchen right now, so it's not, it's not the only source for people to get food. We have a soup kitchen. And so I just need a number, what your comfort level is for permitting those types of gathering in the parks.
Our hope, obviously, is that if we can return the parks back to their normal use, that that might also clear up some of the daytime.
Is there a legal, what is a group, or is there a definition, a legal definition of a group?
I don't know where it would be contained. It probably would, would differ depending on what you were trying, but I don't know about it.
I've looked in other cities' codes, and it just, it differs from like one community to the next. I would, I would say...
It's a size that would hamper the normal use of the park?
Yeah.
How many people would hamper the normal use of the park?
I, I'm just saying, I don't know, is the soup kitchen functioning? Because I never heard that it was not.
As far as I know, it is.
As far as we know, it would.
I don't think everything...
Yeah, okay. So is the idea, then, that we would be encouraging the group that provide food at Chino Park to use the soup kitchen? Are we saying that would be a good place where we do that? Or are we just saying we don't want to shoot in the park at all?
We're suggesting that the feeding in the park is interrupting the normal use of the park. And so if they could find a place that didn't do that in the public space, Chief Tahanovic offered the Police Department Parking Law as a good place they could do it.
That's perfect.
Well, you know what else we have to consider? This isn't Mr. Downs' question, too. They're performing religious services in that park as well.
They do communion and basically kind of a church service, so...
They do communion?
On service.
Once again, that's a, I would assume they would need a permit.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking. Does this, does this give them the right to apply for a permit under a certain set of terms? Or are we just saying, if you do any of this, you can't ever use the park? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
So it, it's definitely a complicated situation because demonstrations, the way this is worded, and again, it's mirrored from another community, the term Special Event shall not include temporary demonstrations or temporary uses that do not have an impact on city property. So where they're having an impact on city property is the, the fact that they're allowed to eat there and remain there because they're being handed the food. It's not that we're wanting to say, no, you can't have religious expression on our public property. We're not saying that. What we're saying is, you can, but if you're going to extend it then to include handing out food, handing out any other paraphernalia, that's where the problem lies. And that's what, that's, it's what's keeping those people there. And again, I mean...
I'm just thinking, what if it was a permit that said you can be in the park between this time period, and then you have to clean up everything that you've done so that it doesn't burden the city staff to clean up afterward?
I think that's what we're proposing.
That is...
I agree.
Okay, I don't see that in here, so that's what I'm trying to figure out, is if...
So again, because, yeah, because, and I shouldn't include in the entire ordinance, but it's pages and pages of it. The whole entire section on special events is really, again, well-written. It just didn't anticipate anything except for entertainment events and filming, which we really have a lot of other events that need to be permitted, and this is one of them. If he's, if someone wants to have a religious service there, that's fine, but they need to disperse after. They should have a permit if they're going to do anything else. And at the very least, they need to pay that deposit fee if we're gonna do nothing more, pay a deposit fee. That deposit fee's gonna get forfeited if they don't return that park to normal condition.
Is there any way to make a, sorry for interrupting, Audra, is there any way to make a every-time application fee? Because if, if someone applies for it once a year for a, whatever...
Weekly.
Yeah, if they, they apply once a year to have that Special Use Permit, that's, that's not prohibitive. But if you have to apply and you pay fifty dollars every week, that becomes prohibitive. And at this point, I think that's what we need to look towards, become, becoming prohibitive to those groups of people.
We, go ahead, I'm sorry, Audra.
So the code currently as written allows the permit to be for three days.
Yeah, three, no, I get that, but is there, is there a fee?
Yes.
Like, oh, one-time fee?
There's a fifty-dollar fee for the special event.
I missed that.
And there's a five-hundred-dollar deposit for each special event, every three days.
Okay, that, that's perfect.
That would be the expectation, is that those fees are paid.
Yeah, and then that gives them the opportunity, thank you for Chief Tahanovic's gracious offer of the parking lot, because he would offer them that free of charge, I presume.
Right, but I do think implicit and ulterior comments are the fact that they are and should be and need to be allowed to congregate for religious purposes.
After they pay the fee.
Exactly. I don't think we want to regulate that or charge them.
But after, after they pay the fee.
That's right. If they're going to remain and pass out food, then it becomes a bad...
But then also, I thought, isn't there responsibilities for the kitchens that prepare those to be...
Health department?
Yeah, health department.
We're moving into that, that came up on Friday, so...
Is that, is that being looked at?
I think because they don't sell the food, it may not be applicable.
The county regulates that, and I don't have a response, but I am anticipating the response that Councilwoman Ogletree just mentioned.
Oh, do you think so?
I, I, I'm anticipating it, but I haven't gotten it yet.
But I do think if there's a fifty-dollar fee, and then even the three days, I think that's beneficial, because that will cause them to find somewhere else, which will lessen people gathering at the park, and then keep them awake at night in the park. They'll find some other place.
So, and I'm thinking, for instance, the, I'm sorry, the Sunday service, if that's what he's doing, and they're doing communion, that sort of thing is addressed. It's not something that would require the permit. It's that daily gathering to distribute food, even if he, if there's a prayer said, that's not the same as, as holding a, holding any sort of a, oh, gosh, the words are escaping me.
Service.
Yeah, religious service. That's really not the intent, and if it is the intent, that's fine, but we're still gonna have to collect fees and regulate, because it, it is impacting public property.
A religious service combined with a meal would still require a permit.
Okay, I want to make sure of that.
Yes. Okay, so I have a question. So we have the issue on Sundays. If you've interrupted me enough, I can interrupt.
You didn't interrupt, because I'm sitting.
So we're addressing this, the once-a-week big meal, but what about the distribution of breakfast there? It's almost, I don't, is it a daily, or...
It's every morning.
Every morning.
Every morning?
Every morning, nine o'clock.
All the time.
How many people is that? Because that's what we need to set the limit, about five below that.
You know, legally, a park is where you have food anyway, so how are you gonna limit, I mean, they can serve food, they're all...
It's not a mass distribution of food.
Well, picnic, if you have your whole family, that's a mass distribution of people cooking.
But if you're sharing your family, that's, you don't want...
Well, but what I'm saying is, is that legal to chase them out of there? I mean, seriously, can we tell them not to go there and gather?
We have had family reunions in the past use the park, so family reunions over the number of people would just be required to pull a permit.
As long as we...
And they've done that.
As long as we apply it universally, then we're not being discriminated against.
That's exactly it.
And I think we cite the food distributor, right? It's like, if you have twenty burritos, you're anticipating giving food to, you know, twenty people. So that, that's what we do. As well-intentioned as they may be, and as, you know, harsh as that may come across, we, we cite the person who's passing our food without a permit to what is anticipated as a fairly large number of people, right?
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I still think that, that's gonna be tough if somebody really pushes the issue that, you know, you can give food to people in the park. I mean, I could go down there and buy hot dogs and give it to them, and they could have twenty-five, thirty people there.
This is not gonna be easy.
I know, I, right, we need to really kind of look at that. And we did try, Mike and when Charlie was there, they did have, take the food underneath the bideok, and they, they didn't like it.
And you destroyed it.
They brought it back.
And that's why the picnic tables are down there.
Right, and the soup kitchen over here, they're, they're an area that's open there, they could come there. And what happens is they go down there at nine o'clock, eight-thirty, and get breakfast, and then most of them come up here. They, they serve about thirty, forty at lunch. So I, I don't know how you do that.
They could even park in the Safeway parking lot and pass out, you know, breakfast burritos in the Safeway parking lot.
They have to move to private property and have that permission.
Yeah, right, but I think people would be thrilled if we got them out of Chino Park.
Well, I, I agree with you, I think that's, that's right, but how we, how do we do it, that we can get it? That's workable for both of it. I mean, we don't want them to go somewhere else and, and cause more problems than, than it is already.
Right.
I think we've got to try something.
Okay, so...
Do you think this is a start?
I think it's a start. May, yeah, just for, to, for clarification. So we have a special event section in this, right? We want to avoid that. So we need to create, so what you need from us is somewhat to create this new park permit?
No, we're not...
No, no.
We don't need to create a park permit? No verbiage on that?
It's going to be considered Special Event Permit.
Okay, you want to keep it under that?
Yep.
Okay, that's gonna make sure.
That's how we're going to leave it. We're going to redefine Special Event so that it is more holistic and encompasses all circumstances. So we have, we have Special Event Permits for use of parks. So someone wants to use, for instance, the pavilion over at Central Park, they need to get a permit to do that. And we have rules and regulations that surround all of those things. There's guidelines. Those will be handed out to whoever applies for the permits. There's fees associated with whatever the use is, so Special Events, fifty dollars, duration is three days, they'll have a five-hundred-dollar deposit. It's refunded if there's no damage or trash left behind. If there is, we're gonna keep that money.
So, so...
Because, and it's not as a punishment, it's to offset our costs, because as you know, it's extra cost, and cost should go with whatever the benefit is.
I think this is a great start.
It is, it's a great start.
What is the three-day thing, though? What does that mean? They get three days to hold the event, or three days of rubbish?
Three consecutive days.
Three consecutive days is the duration of the permit. That's how long that permit will be good for.
So they could be there for three whole days?
Consecutive.
They have to define their hours. So, and again, we're gonna look at resources. If, if it's not going, it's not like we're going to say in all instances, yes, this is approved. We're gonna look at the resources. What does this permit, how does it impact everybody else's use of the park? How does it impact other businesses? So we have to look at all of those elements. We, we're not just gonna write our permits and say, okay, you're gonna get one every three days.
We look at staff resources, it's similar to every event, especially the permit.
Let's say they wanted to set a time from nine to eleven every day. So for three days, they could do it from nine to eleven?
For three days, yes.
Okay.
Consecutive.
Three consecutive, yes.
But it is, it is consecutive days.
It is consecutive days.
And so per, per every, for every occurrence, it's fifty dollars plus five hundred. So if you do, if you have a four-month week, you're going to spend two hundred dollars to do that. Spend two hundred, not be refunded.
And every time you don't clean the park up, we keep your...
I, I think this is a good start, because you're de-incentivizing people to misuse the park.
Right.
And I think it was really a smart use of our existing code, that was really good.
I think, and that's the whole religious services and what have you, it, that claim can be made, absolutely, but at the same time, we have to look at overall impact for the entire community. So we, just like we have the soup kitchen, we also have a lot of churches. If, if someone wants to consistently use our park as their church, they should be having a permit to do that.
Churches, churches aren't free to operate.
No, they're not.
Those parishioners need to cover utilities, tax, I mean, so there should be a fee associated there, too, and then...
And that, that person always has options. If he wanted to, he or she wants to open their own organization, their own church, they can do that, and have all of those things on their private property instead of the public property, so that people can enjoy the...
I, I wanted to revisit one thing, if I may. I mentioned earlier, and this is not a complaint, this is a description, it just went by in passing, but I think, I, I think it'd be worth asking for a consensus of council. I think until we get the park under control, I think we should remove the picnic tables from that specific area, because it's, it's only incentivizing illicit behavior, right?
We can take care of that, we don't need a council, though. That's an operational...
I think that would be...
Sure.
Okay. I, I just really feel strongly about seeing it done.
Sure. We, we're, that's why we're here, to get some direction, where you want to go. So we've got this now, in addition to the earlier segment, we've got the amendment to the ordinance, which we plan to bring forward immediately, so we can get started with regulating the activities in the park, for the purpose of returning to the park, to its...
And that's, that's every park.
It's every park.
Yeah, okay.
It is. Okay, any other questions for Ms. Garrett? No, we want to...
Gathering of ten?
Ten, that's what I wanted to go through and say.
Ten.
I, like, to say ten.
That's, yeah, I think that's, that's definitely a number I've seen in other communities, gathering of ten.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other input on the language in here, the definition? I've totally removed the entertainment and filming, it just needs to be all-encompassing, and it will, it is this way. And the, the application form takes care of that. And so once this ordinance is approved, the guidelines will be redone to redefine, they will have those guidelines, and so there's gonna be that outreach.
I have, I have a question, just really quick, if I may. What, what will happen if this all goes into effect?
What, what will happen if, um, this all goes into effect? It's all signed, sealed and delivered, and then comes Saturday, there's a big gathering that happens every week? What will happen at that point?
We should bring Chief Tahanovic back up. We had this discussion where.
We'll cite him, we'll cite him.
And what's the, what's the?
It'll be in, in the code, a three hundred dollar fine.
Okay.
And we'll cite the person who is responsible for the gathering.
Okay.
Okay, right, we'll cite him. And we'll bring, yeah, sure, you bet. And we'll bring him in and we'll be court, and we'll, we'll prosecute him rigorously.
So the communication needs, yeah, the communication needs to happen in advance of that, obviously, so that no one's blindfired, but, um.
Can we, can we make an ordinance for unsolicited panhandling? Where people just pay them? No.
Excuse me, as I'm looking at the wording of where you have examples of special events included, we're not willing to, and you go through several things, nothing in that list resembles what we're discussing. And so I don't know whether there's some wording that you want to put in there to express, you know, uh, large scale, um, food distribution, park, or, I mean, we don't have anything like a restaurant required, or what you would typically think of as a special event.
Sure.
Yeah.
We'll add some.
No, I don't.
Okay, that is really quick.
We'll add that.
Thank you.
Is this a parade circus? Block party? It's one of them. You're right.
Large scale food, then.
Right, yeah. Is this a bicycle race?
That was great feedback, thank you.
That was, well, that's right, it's gonna have a lawyer.
Yeah.
Just hold up.
The lighting and the cameras.
Cameras.
Yes.
That was from the first section, yes. Slade presence, lighting and cameras.
Remove picnic tables.
Remove picnic tables and ordinance change from this section. So we've got five recommendations.
You know, we got off to kind of a slow start.
We do have a few, we do have a few other things. If you're asking, talking questions, we're gonna scare.
Okay.
Thank you to the clerk's office.
If you have anything between now and, uh, then today, August first, please send them our way and we'll incorporate.
So in following up with the public comments that we've had at meetings recently, a couple of things came to light in those conversations. And, um, I think the comments that were made were something along the lines of, the city's policy are increasing crime and driving, um, this issue we've been talking about today. So in talking about that with a group that was coming forward, one of the things that came to light is that there is an impression out there that the city was considering putting an encampment in place. Now, this predates me. I did go back and listen to your discussion, and it was to create a public space using public funding to create an encampment. I would like to circle back and get a feeling from council of where you stand on this issue so we can, for the public at once, answer that. And, and if we do wanna proceed, give council, give staff, uh, some direction. So it's an open-ended question in the public right now of what we're considering.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I can start if you want me to.
Yeah.
I, I think if we, if we set as our goal to end unhoused people's existence in this community, we would need to do something that, um, involved. And we would need to get organizations that have gathered under the coalition to work with us to do that, help solutions. Because what I saw in Alamosa was actually a good step in the right direction. I also saw that the only way it worked, though, was with very strict rules that were uniformly and universally enforced. That's a lot of work. I mean, we talked about fixing parks, that's one set of work. This is a whole nother set of work. They actually have two community service officers who do that work, um, who don't carry a gun, but that's what they do. But they are making progress. It's about what the will of this council is, it's about what the will of the city is with regard to that population. Frankly, I would like us to. I would also like it, however, to be run by a nonprofit that the city works with, the city helps, um, because it's, it's gonna be very, um, polarizing, um, whatever it is. It would be nice if it wasn't on city land, but someone donated the land and wanted to work with it. For instance, um, the gentleman we've been talking about, Pastor Clay, I know for a long time, he has had a dream that he wants to create a place for unhoused people to live, and I would love to see that. Because I think it is the solution, a solution, to get people from a situation where they're living desperately on the street to, towards where they have, um, a life. And I care about that. I, as a human being, I care about that. What I also care about, as I've expressed, is stopping the destruction of Trinidad assets. Not tolerating that, no. But that's, I guess that's what I do.
Okay, Frank?
No, I'm not for it at all. I, I don't think we have the resources or the area for this, and, and I think we'd just be attracting more trouble than we've had. We can't deal with what we got now. And, and a lot of it is in the homeless, as I just spoke to, like Karen, the mayor, explaining about. Most of those people, I know, they live in Trinidad, they have parents, and they're just away from their home. So I don't, I don't think, I think we'd be doing injustice for that. And like I say, we, taxpayers' money, it's, it's tough as it is now, and it's only gonna get worse. And to find an area that we can have where people want them, it's, you ain't gonna find them. So that, that's my opinion.
Mr. Trejo.
It's tough, because you see the positives and negatives of both, you know? One, we're just not in a position right now to be able to, to do it. But I do somewhat agree with Councilman Ogletree, where if someone was willing to donate the land, I think, you know, we could have a hand in helping, and I think supporting completely, you know, to kind of, to support it, to help support them, I mean, you know, in their efforts to, for, towards some kind of encampment in that direction.
Okay.
But as far as, as what I'm seeing now, I, I, it's unfortunate. I know it's a small need. I'm not seeing it as being, I don't feel that it would be utilized here.
Okay.
I think it worked really well for, for Alamosa. We have some downsides on that, but. It, it's, it's really hard because it's, it makes you feel like you're heartless.
You are.
Yeah. I left it at home. So, but, hey, so in, in, in all fairness, if, if it was feasible at this moment, that we would be able to find a way to do it, I would be for it. But in the situations that we are in now, I, I'm not seeing it. I'm not for it at this moment.
Okay.
Saying here with, true. Initially, I was for it at the very beginning. They sold it, it sounded really good, what Alamosa was doing and how we could do that, but we don't have that, I'm not sure, as far as getting land and a place to put it. So right now, I'm not moving forward because we still have to sort out the kinks about how to even get to that. So I don't, who must be responsible for that part of the deal?
As, I, I say this frequently, I have a lot of respect for Councilman Ogletree, and I think she made a lot of, um, astute points about the trip to, uh, Alamosa. However, at, at this point, I'm, I'm not for it, and I couldn't see myself being for it in the, in the future after, after a lot of thought. I just don't think it's, uh, the taxpayers' responsibility to provide that, that environment and then be expected to, in an ongoing fashion, police that environment. And ultimately, I'm not certain they're doing those people a, a service. I mean, hopefully, and it's, it's, it's a human travesty, obviously, but hopefully those people can find their way, um, to recovery in order to do that, from, from what I understand. I mean, they, they need to become to a point in their life where they, they find it to be non-tenable, and then they're willing to seek help. And I'm not saying that in a heartless fashion. I, I hope the best outcome for all of those people, but I just don't think that it's our responsibility to burden taxpayers with that. That's, that's mine. So I am, I am against it.
So it was my idea to, to go to Alamosa and look at that encampment, because I thought, I really had high hopes for it. So we went to the encampment, and it was in March, wasn't it? The weather was good. So let me, let me digress. I found out later that the city of Alamosa got a grant for one point five million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars over three years for that encampment. We don't have one point five million dollars for an encampment, number one. Number two, we went to the encampment, and it was in the, kinda like the outskirts of Alamosa. It was a piece of property the city held out of this huge lot. How big do you think that lot was? An acre, two acres?
Oh, bigger than that.
Yeah. There were three tents. Two of them were, um, inhabited. One was an older gentleman who was quite talkative, and, uh, that's his home. It works for him. There was another couple there that I, I didn't talk, we didn't talk to, but it seemed like they were very responsible. The other tent that was on that property was abandoned. So I, I asked them, I said, well, what happens to this? Well, we get, uh, volunteers in to clean this out when they abandon their tent. So we're doing the exact same thing in the encampment that we're doing inside the city limits. They had, uh, Wi-Fi connected, they destroyed that. They had, uh, power connected, they destroyed that. Some organization in Alamosa, because it gets really cold over there in the wintertime, bought huts, and they burned the huts. The huts weren't there any longer. So it's.
They cut, they cut holes all along the fence to leave for a shorter route.
Yeah, and they used, they were, even though that they were porta potties, they were still devicating and urinating in those huts, and it caused an issue. So I came in my, my senior, uh, moments of reason. So we're bringing people that don't wanna be part of society into an area that we want them to, to perform and act like a part of the society. And in my mind, I just don't think it's gonna work. I'm not for the city doing any encampments. But that being said, there's a, an, uh, nonprofit out there, or an organization that wants to do it. I, I'm willing to assist if we can. But the city, one point five million dollars. I mean, when I sat in the PD and saw the intricacies of their record-keeping, the records that they keep on these people, I thought, oh my God, the, the amount of personnel we need just to keep up those records on who's going to drug rehab, who's going. I mean, it was, it was just phenomenal. It's gonna be very interesting to see what Alamosa does when that one point five million runs out.
And, um, I do have, um, some information that Alamosa's council has voted to close their camp. We're not sure of why, what drove that decision, or the outcome of that vote. But this is what we needed. And it does clarify, I believe, for those in the community who were confused about where this direction was going. And the final thing I had is, and Councilmember Ogletree brought up, the, the coalition. So in doing some research and looking back, that came about in, Mr. Ruger, one of my predecessors was greatly involved in the beginnings of that organization. And he did bring in police and fire, appointed, uh, the city's representatives, one of whom is Chief Bakarak. And they have sat on that coalition throughout the past two years as they have met. Um, they have recently gone through a change of executive director. I have met Erica Gonzalez, the new director, and received a request for her to attend a work session and introduce herself. But if you would like, as you mentioned, to know what is going on with the coalition now, uh, we could ask Chief Bakarak to come up and speak, and that was our last item for this discussion.
Yes, we would love to.
Okay.
I thought I was gonna get out of here.
Yeah. You were hoping.
All right, so I'm really not the spokesperson for the coalition, but I'll tell you what's going on.
That's okay, but you're our spokesman.
Okay. So we hired a systems coordinator, we had a little hiccup. We hired a new systems coordinator that's gonna be coming and introducing herself to you. Um, I think she'll be really good. That systems coordinator is for data. Their, their whole job is to create data, like our point in time, how many homeless people do we have at any one time, right? And then she inputs it into a database, it's at the state level, and so they can track homeless across the whole state. Without the data, you're not gonna get any grants. To get any grants, you need to be a nonprofit. So we're really pushing, and we have been pushing for the last year, that some nonprofit takes this ball and starts running with it. But no nonprofit has stepped up as of yet. I kinda hear there's one in the works, but we'll see where that goes. But visiting with our coalition in the county and knowing where the city's at, the, the city and the county, we, we don't have the resources to do this. So it needs to be a nonprofit that steps up, takes the ball and runs with it. And with the data that the systems coordinator is collecting and inputting at the state level, then we can start getting some grants to maybe provide some treatment to these folks, bring treatment in, stuff like that. So it, it, it's a lot of mental treatment, a lot of, a lot of drug addiction treatment, alcohol addiction. I mean, you guys talked about the drugs, but you didn't even talk about the alcohol that's out there in our parks. So there's that as well.
I have a question, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, Chief, thank you for being here today. Um, so, uh, just for the public record, would you mind, um, informing us how, uh, how many decision-making members are on the board and, and how many of those are city?
So on the executive team, I think there's, when we're all there, there's probably ten to twelve of us.
And they all have voting?
Right, yeah. On that executive team.
How many of, of those are city?
There's two. There's Detective Sergeant Lay and myself.
Okay.
And, and again, Mr. Ruger appointed us.
So roughly one-sixth of the decision-making body?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
When, when was your last meeting?
Uh, last week.
Okay.
So, she, this new gal, she's really getting up to speed. She's really energetic and.
Good.
And, and trying to get her feet wet, and so I think she's trying to come up with some ideas before she hits you up.
Okay.
So, but she knows kinda where we stand.
And as this coalition moves to a nonprofit, we'll reevaluate, uh, what our role is. We work with nonprofits throughout the community, particularly when the nonprofit's working on a subject matter that is of interest to the city. But we may not be a voting member of the board when that happens.
Well, and I've already kinda mentioned to the coalition that once this nonprofit rolls in, I'm not gonna be part of their board, I'll be there to help them however I can, because that's what I do. But I, I'm not gonna have anything to do with that.
I just, I just wanted to ask that question because to, to that end, I mean, we're not, we don't have a controlling interest.
No.
But I think it is in our interest to have some control.
One of the.
We're at a good, we're at a good point, I think.
Okay, that's, that's good feedback. One of the misperceptions that came out of the conversation with the group that addressed council was very much that we were the coalition, that that was a city-appointed board. So I think we've gone to lengths to clarify that. But that doesn't mean that we don't need to be at a table so we understand the conversations that are going on.
And we're trying to buy in, so this is good, I think.
It is. So we'll see where this goes. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I would like to know when they have.
Yeah, and I would like to know when they have come up with some recommendations.
Well, and I know, I know right now, 'cause we're trying to regroup. Um, but there is gonna be that big public meeting that the coalition is gonna have. I just can't tell you when. Once, once a new lady gets up to speed, I think she will put that on.
I, I want to be able to use that expertise as we craft policy that relates to how we deal with this population.
Especially the data.
And just to correct, her, her title is systems coordinator, not executive director or anything like that. She's the systems coordinator that's hired to collect the data.
It's the data that can help us draw decisions.
All right, sir.
That's it?
Thanks, Chief.
We bet.
The only thing under the item, and it came out of a conversation with council members as I was asking you what you wanted. Um, we were looking to see if there were any violations related to animals, specifically dogs, within the park. And we didn't find any violations. There was a concern that some of the animals that are associated with how the park's being used were creating, um, a menacing environment. We haven't found examples of that. So, if that certainly is the case, then it's just undocumented at this point. And that was the final item I had for you on this subject. Was there anything we did not discuss that you were looking for today?
This is yours. Positive, I think we're taking some positive, positive steps here.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think all of us up here, and staff included, would say, you know, we're probably heading for some unintended consequences, but those, those will have to be addressed when they arise. But I think we're taking some positive steps.
In particular, I wanna thank, uh, Ms. Audrey Garrett, Chief Tahanovic, for their work on this. It was, they've done excellent job trying to address these issues. Thank you. Mayor, that's what we have.
Okay, so I have a question for you. There's five weeks in.
No meeting next week.
No. So, our next meeting will be a regular meeting on August fifth?
Yes, and we'll have a pretty robust work session on the eleventh, but no meeting next week.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, nice, thank you.
Don't look so giddy, that's not.